Good morning, this is Elaine Kugelmann for OCTV. We're at the FIU campus at the Charter High School for a town hall meeting. We're going to meet with students and seniors and the Secretary of Education, Arne Duncan. So come along with us and see what's happening in schools today.
With many of you continuing your education in the fall, several matters, including financial aid, scholarships, loans, and the prospect of attending your dream university are all issues of concern. Today, you will have the opportunity to participate in an open forum with the United States Secretary of Education, Arne Duncan. Before we commence with our forum, I first have the pleasure of introducing our very own Mayor Ordus.
Ladies and gentlemen, students, the reason why we're here. I'm the Vice Chair of the US Conference of Mayors Education and Workforce Board, and we've had many interactions with Secretary Duncan. He comes in and does a wonderful, wonderful job, as you're going to hear today. That's my relationship. The first time I met him, we went to Washington and we received a Blue Ribbon Award for our charter schools. And I've been telling Secretary Duncan, I want you to come down to Pembroke Pines to witness what truly is a magnificent school and how we operate. And I was telling him about our great high school. Ninety-eight percent graduate, ninety-four percent go to college. And it was going on and on and on. He says, "I get it. I get it." So with that, he's here today. So I wanted to introduce the great Secretary of Education, Arne Duncan.
I get to travel all over the country, visit hundreds and hundreds of schools, and some are amazing like this one, some are in the middle, and some, your heart breaks for what's not going on for children in those schools. But to see the entire community, the mayor, community members, public servants, everybody coming together to create a world-class education system, I can't tell you how important it is, not just for you and your families, this community, but for the country. We need more folks being creative, being innovative, and putting children first. And right now, we're fighting for our country. One generation ago, one generation ago, we led the world in college graduates. And anyone know where we are, where the United States is today relative to other countries in college graduates? Any guesses? You guys done some homework? Sixteenth. Sixteenth. So we used to be first, and today we're sixteenth. And the President has challenged us to lead the world in college graduates by 2020. And guess who's going to lead us there? It's going to be you guys. Some of you guys and your brothers and sisters. You're going to lead the country where we need to go. And all of you know the jobs of the future are where the most educated folks are. And so whatever your dream is, whatever your aspiration is, you have to take that next step. So I thank you for your commitment to your own education. I thank you for the example you're setting, not just for this community, but for the country. And we want to be a good partner. Couple of quick thoughts. First of all, we tried to really simplify the financial aid form itself. The FASF form used to be a huge barrier to entry. We'd love to hear your comments and critiques. We took out about thirty percent of questions. We've gotten it down to under a half hour on average. And when I ran the Chicago Public Schools, we were trying to get more and more students to go to college. Many of my students were English language learners, many were first generation going to college, and we found the financial aid form itself was a barrier for taking that next step. That was crazy, and we've worked real hard to simplify that. Secondly, we've had a massive increase in Pell Grants. Anyone know how much more money we put into Pell Grants over the next decade? Any guesses? Forty billion dollars. Forty B. Forty billion dollars. So I don't care how much money you have or don't have, what your family has or doesn't have. If you work hard, money's going to be there for you. And what we did is pretty interesting. With the President's leadership and the Vice President's leadership, we simply stopped subsidizing banks, said we would make all those grants and loans directly to students ourselves, cut out the middleman, didn't go back to taxpayers for nickel, and put forty billion dollars into young people. We thought that made more sense. We thought it was much more logical to support education than to support banks. That was very controversial in Washington. It was the right thing to do. We were thrilled to get that done. Then on the back end, we really worry about how much loans people are coming out of college with. The average loans have gone up about double, a hundred percent increase over the past fifteen years. And so what we've done is now index your loan repayments when you guys graduate four or five years from now to how much you make. So if you make a lot of money, you'll pay more in your loans. If you go into public service and become a teacher, and I want to talk more about that later, we'd love to have many of you come back and serve this community, we want those loan repayments to be less. And so it's a much fairer way to do that. So we're trying to put a lot of help on the front end, help on the back end, but we're challenging colleges and universities themselves to keep their costs down, not keep escalating. And we're challenging states to continue to invest, not just in P to twelve education, but in higher education. So all of us have to come to table. But the end of the day, the only way we're going to be strong as a country, the only way we're going to bring jobs to our communities and keep them, is to have the best educated workforce in the world. You guys are doing an amazing job. You guys have a great, great foundation. You are academically prepared. You've had an extraordinary principal, great, great, great teachers. Take advantage of it, take that next step, and look forward to having a great conversation with you. Thanks so much.
Okay, as you can see, Secretary Duncan is just a regular guy. He's just one of us. And we appreciate that. We appreciate he and this administration for what they're doing for education. So we're going to, we're going to open it up. The Secretary wants to hear about our great school. So the first part of it, I would like to ask Mr. Baer, our principal, to come up, just give a short dissertation of why we're so successful. Mr. Baer?
Thank you, and let me just say it is such an honor to have Secretary Duncan here with us this morning. It is a tremendous opportunity for him to get a chance to see what a great group of students, parents, and teachers we have here at Pembroke Pines Charter High School. In my opinion, our student body and our school has set the bar, not just for charter schools, and not just for the school district, but for the entire nation. You guys are terrific and can tell the story better than I ever could. There's so many great individual stories, successes that we've had over the years, and so many families that have been so instrumental in making us who we are, that I'm going to give the time to them and give them an opportunity to tell the stories as well. Our four elementary schools go into, there are two middle schools, into our high school, which really was the credit to the city of Pembroke Pines and our commissioners and mayor for having the vision to put something so unique and so innovative together here in South Florida. There's really nothing like it, but there really should be more. So with that, I will turn it back over to you, Mayor.
So we want to open up for some questions. And when I first became mayor, we decided to form an education committee in the city of Pembroke Pines. And the commission selected five or six people for that. And we have our chair today, Marilyn Saltenepoor. We want to get a mic to her. She has a question for you.
And my question, actually, my board met last night. And one of the things that we were concerned about is NCOB. And the goals that schools throughout the district, throughout the country, are going to have to meet very shortly. A hundred percent proficiency, a hundred percent of the students. How's the federal government going to help schools meet that goal? And what are the repercussions if they don't?
No Child Left Behind, I think the goals of it were admirable, were laudable, forever showing a spotlight on achievement gaps that we used to like to sweep under the rug, and the focus on disaggregating data is important. But I actually think there's many things that were broken about No Child Left Behind. I thought it was far too punitive, many, many ways to fail. The only reward for success was you weren't labeled a failure. That doesn't make any sense to me. It was very prescriptive, top-down from Washington. When I ran the Chicago Public Schools, I had to almost sue my current Department of Education for the right to tutor about twenty-five thousand young children after school in Chicago. These are poor children who desperately wanted to work harder, and the federal government was telling me, "No." That made no sense. It led to, this was unintentional, it led to a dumbing down of standards. Many states reduced standards, which is the worst thing you can do, and it led to a narrowing of the curriculum. Reading and math are hugely important, but science, social studies, dance, drama, the arts, PE, so many of those things, states and schools walked away from. And so we've decided to go out and partner directly with states and give them a waiver. And for me, the trade-off is very simple. Where states will maintain a high bar, where they'll maintain real accountability, where they will maintain college and career-ready standards, we frankly want to get Washington out of the way and give folks a lot more room to move. Eleven states in the first round have applied for waivers. Florida is one of those. We'll be announcing the waiver recipients. We'll announce some next week and some two weeks from now. Florida's working really, really hard. I think there's a chance to break through. And I say all the time that the best ideas in education will never come from me, and frankly, will never come from anyone else in Washington. They'll come at the local level. We want to do a much better job of listening to great teachers and great principals and great superintendents. We think this flexibility we're providing, greater autonomy for greater accountability, we think that's the right trade-off. And hopefully, it'll give folks a lot more room to move and make sure children have a well-rounded education.
The Pembroke Pines Charter Schools have been around for about thirteen years now, and in my opinion, our schools have done an outstanding job educating our students. However, our schools have had to operate with less financial support than our public school counterparts because of, because the local school districts do not share the tax dollars that they receive for capital projects. Some states require the school districts to share this money, and some states, like Florida, simply say the district may share the money. My question for you is, as the Secretary of Education over all fifty states, couldn't you make a rule that every state must share the tax dollars with the charter schools or face losing federal funding?
It's a great question. And let me, let me come at it from a broader standpoint and come back to answer it specifically. What troubles me so much in education, if we have so many false debates, we fight about the wrong things, and then when we do that, young people fall through the cracks. So we have this whole debate of charters versus traditional schools. And I always say, I can't find a six-year-old or seven-year-old anywhere in the country who knows or cares whether they go to a traditional school or to a charter school or to a gifted school, to whatever school. Our children want to know, do I have a great teacher? Does that teacher care about me? Am I learning? Am I safe? We need a lot more high-performing traditional schools. We need a lot more high-performing charter schools. We need a lot less low-performing traditional schools, a lot less low-performing charter schools. There's nothing inherently good or bad about a traditional charter. I just look at results. I look at outcomes. This school happens to be a charter. This school has amazing results for young people. We need to support schools like this in every way, in every form or fashion. So the heart of your question is, what can we do at the federal level to work on that? And it's a challenge. You may know, we're sort of the minority investor in education. Our funding is usually eight to ten percent from the federal level, usually about half comes from the state, usually about forty percent the local community. But whatever leverage we can put in place to make sure that folks are being treated fairly, we want to do that. So I think it's a really good challenge to me, I had to think about what leverage we can use, using our resources, to try and work on that. But I think, again, collectively, teachers, parents, students, we have to get past this charter, non-charter debate. We have to be for great, great public education in this country. We have to challenge the status quo when the education isn't good, and I think we all have to unite behind that. We fight about all the wrong things. It's part of the reason other countries are passing us by.
So you can wait back for it.
My name's Sean Walker, and I'm a senior here. I just wanted to ask, with the Tenth Amendment stating that anything not expressly outlined in the Constitution as a requirement of the federal government, it is left to the states, and most states already have a Department of Education. What is the necessity of a Department of Education on the federal level? It doesn't seem like there's much.
Great, great question. And I think every single day, every single day, I'm trying to better understand what the federal role is, what the state role is, and what the local role is. So a couple of things. We provide a huge amount of resources to students who live below the poverty line, Title I dollars. I think that's a really important federal role. We provide a lot of resources to students with special needs, with disabilities. We think that's a critically important role. Historically, many children in this country have been discriminated against. When we tried to integrate schools in various states going back to the sixties, the federal government had to intervene there because at the local level, they were resisting letting black and brown children go to schools. So I think it's very important that we look at the equity issue. But I think going forward, the big thing that our, the role we can play, is I think we can replicate best practices, we can scale up what works, we can tell the truth. What doesn't make sense, let me give you an example. Historically, we had fifty states each setting their own standards, and many standards dumbing them down. You're not competing for jobs with children in this community, or children in the state, or children in the country. You're competing for jobs with children in India, and China, and Singapore, and South Korea. We need one high standard internationally benchmark, college and career-ready. Thanks in large part, frankly, to our resources, not our stick, but our carrot, our incentives. Forty-five states recently adopted college and career-ready standards. That's a breakthrough for this country. And for the first time ever in the history of our nation, a child in Mississippi, and a child in Florida, and a child in Massachusetts is going to be measured by the same yardstick. We think that's really important. So I think the federal role is to scale up best practices, to take to scale what works, and to challenge the status quo when it's not working.
Hi, my name is Victoria Green. I was wondering, Apple just signed a contract with three different textbook, the top textbook publishers. And considering the cost of textbooks, each textbook costs around fifty, sixty, seventy dollars. So a semester's worth of textbook would be the cost of one iPad. And that way, an iPad could be constantly updated, and we wouldn't have to be constantly purchasing new textbooks. Would this be something that we are going to try and quickly innovate into the schools? And is the money that is saved off of the textbooks used for the iPads, would that be a personal profit for the government, or is that going to go back into our school system?
Great, great questions. That money has to go back into the classroom. That money has to go to teachers and the principals and to the hard work you guys are doing to serve more students. So let me be, this is an interesting one. Education, for a whole host of reasons, and often because of, I think, the wrong fights and wrong debates, education moves very, very slow. Technology has transformed how everyone does business. Technology has transformed how our view interacts socially. Technology is leading to revolutions, literally leading to revolutions around the globe. But technology has changed education about two percent. Education's so far behind everything else. I think technology has a chance to dramatically reduce costs. Everybody's struggling for money. Teachers don't get paid enough. Principals don't get paid enough. There's not enough money per pupil. If we can stop giving that money to textbook publishers, and we can put that money into schools, better use existing resources, that's a huge step in the right direction. I think technology can also be a great equalizer. And child living in the inner city, or child living in a remote community, a rural community, or child living on an Indian reservation can have a chance to have access to great classes. So I think, again, we have to get better faster before, just again, looking at the competition in Singapore, no, sorry, South Korea. South Korea's committed that by 2015, they will have no more textbooks. None. None. Zero. So that's the competition. So we can either follow them, or we can lead them. So I think this is a very significant step in the right direction. It's going to reduce costs, put money back in. I think technology can drive innovation, particularly for disadvantaged children. But we have to continue in education, not to keep just doing, not just doing things the same way, but behaving in very different ways. We got to get better faster.
My name is Natalie Maria. I'm also a senior. You talk about building a leading workforce, and so my question is about the Dream Act. I know this is usually like about immigration, but I think that as much as this is about immigration, it's also about education and education equality, or lack thereof. And my question is, what do you foresee is the future of the Dream Act? And how do you think we can build consensus about it?
Yeah, it's a, it's a great question. And the President, the Vice President, and I are passionate supporters of the Dream Act. And for me, it's not just about helping those individuals and their families and their communities, that's part of it. But there's this amazing pool of talent. So many of these dreamers are going to be the future entrepreneurs, the future innovators. They're going to be leading these companies of the future. And for us to leave that talent on the sidelines, I think is a devastating blow to our country. But why we would prefer to have people on the sidelines, you know, being unproductive rather than paying taxes and creating jobs and being the mainstream, makes no sense to me whatsoever. So we're going to continue to push this as hard as we can, and we need more talent, not less, to not do this. It's just mind-boggling to me. So I don't have an easy answer on the political side of this. We got some work done last year, didn't get it across the finish line, but we are absolutely committed to getting this thing done. We have to do that.
Hi, my name is Jean Monique Ho. I'm a teacher here at Pines Charter High School. I wanted to ask, what do you think your role will be, the Department of Education, in the new common core standards that I believe forty-eight states have signed on to? They're benchmarked to international standards. What role do you see the government playing in that regard?
So we have a couple of things. Again, to see forty-six states adopting higher standards is an absolute game changer. And I, again, the credit doesn't go to me or anyone else in Washington. The credit goes to governors, Republican, Democrats across the country, state school chief officers, who realize all of us doing these things in isolation silos, many of us dumbing down standards, we're hurting our children, we're hurting our state. So now you have better assessments, I mean, sorry, higher standards. Coming behind that is we have the two consortium of states working on the next generation of assessments. I think so many of our assessments today aren't very strong. It's feeling the bubble test, doesn't look at critical thinking skills, leads to a dumbing down of what goes on in the classroom. So I'm really hopeful this next generation of assessments breaks through there. Higher standards, better assessments, what has to drive behind that is curriculum. And we are actually, at the federal level, prohibited from touching curriculum, which is okay. Once we have higher standards, once we have common assessments, we can now look across the country, and everyone's being measured by the same yardstick. We can look at who's innovating in terms of curriculum. We can look at who's doing great work in supporting teachers and implementing that curriculum and helping students understand it and principals. And then where we're seeing, you know, people really accelerating the rate of progress, what we can do is share those best practices and take them to scale. So I don't see any direct, we are not going to be writing curriculum. I think that's an inappropriate role for the federal government. We think, again, that's best done at the local level. But we can say is, here's a school system, or a school, or a district, or a state that's doing some really creative things, let's learn together much faster than what we have. My big frustration in education, for all the huge challenges we have, dropout rates that are too high, not enough graduates actually prepared for college or career, for all the challenges we face, they are being solved somewhere. Many of them are being solved right here in this network of charter schools. What we haven't done is learn from each other and take to scale what works. That is our job. I think we can do that in the curricular area as well.
Hi, my name's Taylor Davis. I'm a senior here. I was just wondering, a lot of grants are being cut for the upcoming school year because a lot of us are going to college, like the Pell Grant. And it's forcing a lot of us to take out loans, of which are going to accumulate with interest, and then we can't pay them back when we get out of college because there's such a limited job market. So what's Washington going to do about that?
So first of all, Pell Grants are not being cut. Now, there's some, there's some in Congress who want to cut it, but we were able to raise Pell Grants to the maximum level of five thousand five hundred and fifty dollars, and we were able to maintain that going forward. So we're doing one Pell Grant a year, not two, but yes, going forward, that maximum of five thousand five hundred and fifty right now is solid. Now, we have to maintain that. Some folks want to roll back access, but we're going to continue to fight that very hard. So now you're good in that. On the back end, and again, you should look this up, I talked about reducing those loan repayments, and please go visit our website, it's called Income-Based Repayments, IBR. And so your income, your repayments will be based to your income when you graduate. If you're an investment banker making a lot of money, you'll pay more. If you're a teacher, you'll pay less. But your loan repayments will be capped to ten percent of your income. And what I didn't say earlier is that if you enter the public sector, if you enter the government, if you become a teacher, if you work in a nonprofit, a legal aid clinic, after ten years, whatever loans you have will be absolutely erased, will be forgiven. We're trying to bring in that next generation of talent into the public sector. So not that this is easy, but again, Pell Grants are there, are solid now, income-based repayment is done, and what we have to do is continue to challenge states and challenge universities, states to invest in higher education, and universities not to raise tuition, and that's what we're traveling the country, trying to, trying to really encourage folks to do.
Hi, I'm Shay Vassal, a senior here. What do you think about having a passer-fail test at the end of the year, regardless of what the actual grades are, or how well they did throughout the year? Having like a passer-fail at the end of the year, sort of like the AP exam, whether or not you get credit?
It's a great question, and I, I don't know the details of which one you're asking about here. So I think, I always say you have to look at lots of things. You have to look at grades, you have to look at test scores, you have to look at attendance, you have to look at effort. Should there be a bottom line above which you don't get credit to? That's a tricky one. I think something like the AP, for example, I think there has to be a clear cutoff. At some point, either you're getting that college credit or you're not. So somehow, that may seem a little harsh or a little unfair, but I think that some determining, some determination has to be made there. But whether you're looking at student performance, or teacher performance, or principal performance, or superintendent performance, I keep saying we have to look at multiple measures. We have to get away from looking at one test score. We have to look at a whole variety of things. Every other industry, nonprofits, sports, business, you look at multiple factors. I think we've become a little obsessive of one test score, and we're trying to sort of move the country beyond that.
Hi, I'm Christina Dunbar. I'm also a senior. My question is about the Fine Arts Department. Why is that, when it comes to budget cuts, the Fine Arts Department is the first one to lose everything? There's so many schools in Broward Counties that no longer have band programs or art programs. Why is it that those programs are being cut first in the United States?
It's a huge problem, and I'll give you two answers. So I'll give you a couple of different answers. First of all, I think the general public, policymakers, don't understand how important the arts are. And I think, secondly, young people like yourselves and your parents, your voices are not being heard, and I encourage you to speak up. So these are tough economic times. These are tough budgetary times. Everyone's struggling, federal level, state level, local level, everyone's having a hard time. But I always say, budgets aren't about numbers. Budgets reflect our values. And if we cut things that are making a difference in young people's lives, we do a grave disservice. I worry desperately about the dropout rate in this country. The arts, dance, drama, art, music, debate, robotics, sports, yearbook, all those things that are seen as being extra, actually, those are often the reasons young people go to school. And I always tell folks, honestly, I didn't go to high school necessarily because I loved biology. I wanted to play in a basketball team, and to play in a basketball team, I had to do well academically. So when we eliminate the arts, and we eliminate sports, and we eliminate debate, and robotics, and chess, and all those things, lots of young people, I think, have less of a reason to be excited about going to school every single day, and we lose them. So we have to continue to fight this. Everywhere I go, I talk about this. We're putting in our budget, tough budget times, a billion dollars behind what we're calling a well-rounded education, which includes the arts and PE and other things. So we're trying to lead by example. But at the state and the local level, when budgets are tough, when we have to make tough calls, when we eliminate those things, I really think we hurt students, and we need you guys to help challenge that.
Just a quick comment. It's a great question. The city of Pembroke Pines, at the US Conference of Mayors, win a meeting, just received the Americas for the Arts Award. And for all large cities, I mean, we beat out Los Angeles, New York, Reno, Boston, and that's our commitment in this city, with the commission and our city manager and all of our art and culture, to have a commitment of our arts in our city. I couldn't agree with you more on your comments. Thank you. Yes. And then we're going to come out here. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Kimberly Willoughby. I'm also a senior here. And many seniors all over the state of Florida are paying for college via the Florida Prepaid Plan that their parents have established for them. With tuition rates skyrocketing, many states have found it difficult to keep up with prepaid plans. What will the Obama administration do to save the integrity of these plans, such as these that allow many graduating students, such as myself, to continue their education?
I can't overstate that at every level, federal level, please hold us accountable, but states have to invest in pre-K to twelve education and higher education. States have to provide a solution. Local governments have to invest. So none of us could do this by themselves. And we were clear, federal government can't do it by itself, states can't do it by themselves, the mayor can't do it by himself, but all of us have to invest. And I think, you know, in this audience, most folks understand that education is an investment. Education is an investment, not an expense. Not everyone agrees with that. I talked to lots of people who think education is somehow an expense. I talked to lots of people who think education is somehow an expense. And it's amazing to me that we argue about just adding a couple more hundred dollars to, you know, early childhood education, or K to 12, or higher ed. But we lock people up. We incarcerate folks for 40, 50, 60,000 dollars a year, and we have no debate about that. We do that quite happily as a society. Again, I think our values are misplaced. And so we need to invest at every level. We need to invest not in the status quo, but in the vision of reform and getting better. But all of us have to have skin in the game, federal government, states, and local. What we're trying to do, in very tough economic times, when the President is flatlining domestic spending, he's asking for a $4 billion increase in our investments. So we're trying to walk the walk, hold us accountable for that. But we have to challenge states and local communities to do the same thing as well.
Good morning. My name is Anissa Gonzalez. Rick Scott wanted to cut almost $3 billion from the educational budget in Florida. But as soon as he saw that Florida was dropping to 11th in the country, I think it is, he wanted to immediately invest. Do you think that education is something that can have wiggle room for budgets?
So again, let me take the politics out of it. And again, I really don't care, Republican, Democrat, independent, whatever, that's just not my interest. What I wish, what I wish is that all of you, you talked about how active you are civically, I wish every young person, their parents, and everyone went to the ballot box, again, Republican, Democrat, independent, doesn't matter. In part, a large part of what you're voting on is, is this politician walking the walk, not talking the talk. And so many politicians say they care about education. Very few do. You are blessed, and I hope you take, you understand, you are blessed to have a mayor that is so passionately committed to education. I try and challenge mayors all the time to step up and take responsibility. You might not believe this, many mayors run from education. They run away from it because it is hard, and difficult, and messy, and takes political capital. So we need every political leader to be stepping up and providing leadership and courage in this area, local, state, federal. And what we have is many politicians who talk about it, but don't actually do much. And that's the challenge we have.
Well, in my research, I've seen how you've talked a lot about our need to change education, to better prepare students to become successful in today's environment. Well, in today's environment, the internet and electronics are becoming more of a vital component in our lives and breaking down barriers. So we're no longer competing nationally, we're competing in a global job market. And in my personal opinion, I believe that increasing an emphasis on standardized testing really isn't preparing us in the global job market. I propose to, better equip us, we should more rarely take steps to incorporate technology in the classroom, put more emphasis on foreign language, and teach our students more about global, current global events. What would you propose that we do to make students more appealing in the global job market?
You can have my job when you're ready. Really, really thoughtful, and actually, in all those points, I absolutely agree. And in many countries, young people grow up speaking not two, but often three and four languages. And there's all kinds of brain research that the younger you are, the easier it is to teach a language. So if you start in ninth and 10th grade, you can learn, but it's much easier if you start in pre-K, in kindergarten, in first. And so having young children do that is hugely important. Whether it's foreign exchange programs, or whether it's using Skype, having our children become global citizens early is really important. Final thing, I think about technology, we talked about it earlier, is that I think students should be able to learn not six hours or seven hours a day in class, but 24/7. And, you know, having access, having the chance to work at your own pace, to get better faster, to work on your weaknesses, to improve upon your strengths, is so important. It's a game changer. It's a game changer. And having that access, again, whether it's 11 o'clock at night on a Sunday, or 5 o'clock in the morning on a Friday, whatever it might be, we have to start to move in that direction.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Shelby Felder. I've been going to this school since kindergarten, so this will be my 13th year at Pembroke Pines Charter School. My mom's a teacher, she's been teaching for 25 years. And it's just something that's kind of been a question in my mind all the time, like, how come teachers get paid the same amount if it's their first year or their 25th year? Or is there some way to regulate the way that teachers are paid? Like, obviously, I mean, we're all going to agree that teachers need to get paid more, but is there some way that we can ensure that this happens, rather than, you know, just saying it, or increasing, you know, the funding for schools?
So, these are all fantastic questions. I, again, this is a smart, thoughtful, committed group, absolutely engaged, frankly, way ahead of where I was as a senior in high school. It's just so impressive to, to see it. So let me talk about teaching for one sec. One of my biggest worries is I think we have beaten down education, and we have beaten down teachers. In South Korea, very high-performing country, teachers are known as nation builders. It's a really interesting concept, nation builders. I think our teachers are nation builders, but we don't treat them as such. In other countries, they have the prestige, the status as doctors, lawyers, engineers, and teachers, all at the same level. Somehow, that's not true here. So we have to elevate the profession, we have to strengthen it, we have to recognize teachers for being the heroes that they are. No one goes into education to make a million dollars. Teachers are the most altruistic folks I know. But they also shouldn't have to take a vow of poverty. And I know we lose many young people who would like to teach, who have a heart for it, but they choose to go into more lucrative professions. We also lose many good young teachers when they start to try and buy a home or start a family. So money alone is never, ever going to be the answer. But I think we should double, I've said this publicly, so this is not news, I think we should double starting salaries for teachers. We should be at 60, 65,000. I think a great teacher... I think, I think a great teacher should be able to make, pick a number, $130, $140, $150,000. I think great principals should make more than that. It should not be tied, not everyone agrees with me, it should not be tied purely to seniority, it should be tied to talent. What difference are you making to the lives of students? What are you doing to impact them, particularly disadvantaged children? What are you doing to help them be successful? So I think we have to challenge the status quo here. The final thing I'll say is, education, like every other field, talent matters tremendously. Great teachers, great principals make a huge difference. We're going to lose, over the next four to six years, we're going to lose about a million teachers in this country. We have a baby boomer generation that's retiring. And our ability to attract and retain great talent is going to shape public education for the next 30. It's literally a once-in-a-generation opportunity. And I would challenge many of you to come back and help at this school and help at this community, think about the difference your great teachers have made in your lives. And so we're going to work very, very hard this year, and hopefully for the next five